Hello and welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for Sarasota City Commission. My name is Vilia Johnson and I'm a Director for the League of Sarasota County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan public policy organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. Our candidate forums are held under our education fund, a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) corporation with a mission of voter service and education. The League accepts both women and men as members. The League does not support or oppose political candidates or parties. Today, we welcome six candidates running for city commission. The candidates from District One are Kyle Battie and Willie Shaw. The candidates from District Two are Liz Alpert and Terry Turner. The candidates from District Three are Eric Arroyo and Dan Clermont. City Commission races are nonpartisan. If you are a registered voter in Sarasota County, you can vote in the general election for a candidate in your district regardless of your party affiliation. Let's review the forum rules. The forum will be recorded and posted on our website and other media outlets as determined by the League. The recording is the property of the League. Written permission must be obtained for the use of the video, which may not be altered or edited. Every candidate will be asked the same questions. Candidates should answer my first and last questions in two minutes and all other questions in a minute and a half. Our timer will display a warning when 15 seconds remain and a red stop when time is up. I will rotate which candidates begin answering questions by district. Questions were developed by the Sarasota League and submitted by voters. Any opinions expressed tonight are those of the candidates and not of the League of Women Voters of Sarasota County. This forum will be conducted without rebuttal. We ask all candidates to speak only for themselves and not to provide insight into their opponents. We look to candidates to help us understand their policy positions, problem-solving skills, and values so we can make better choices as informed voters. And now to begin, the order for the first question will be Battie, Shaw, Alpert, Turner, Clermont, Arroyo. And the first question, which is for two minutes, is please introduce yourself and tell us about your education and experience that would help if elected to the Sarasota City Commission. Mr. Battie?
Hello, everyone. And thank you very much, League of Women Voters, for having this forum for us and giving us the opportunity to give our viewpoints and positions on these issues regarding our city. My name is Kyle Scott Battie. I'm running for City Commissioner of District One. I was raised in Newtown, Gillespie, Bayou Oaks, and close to Rosemary District. So I pretty much grew up in the whole of my District One. I have a great affinity for all the neighborhoods of my district. But now I'm sort of re-familiarizing myself with them and the issues that have been plaguing me for quite some time. So, you know, my experience, you know, here in Sarasota, growing up, was great. You know, I had the freedom to move about, do the various things that Sarasota had to offer, particularly for us, you know, being young, outside, and enjoying ourselves and so on. My father, born and raised here in Sarasota, you know, he taught me the values of hard work and never letting anyone or anything sort of impede your progress in life. He was the first African-American salesman out on Santa Monica Circle, which in turn gave him the opportunity to start his own business, Krevats Custom Shirts and Clovis, that started in Sarasota Quay, which now resides in downtown Sarasota in the Burns Court area. He's probably one of the only African-American businesses in Sarasota. Now, my mother, on the other hand, is my heart, was a staunch advocate for children here in this community. She taught a number of years at M.E. Booker. She, like I said, she taught me everything that I ever needed to know in terms of dealing with people and communicating and giving my points of view without being, you know, aggressive or disrespectful. That being said, you know, I look at my experiences in life.
Mr. Battie? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, but you're out of time, so I apologize for that.
I apologize about that.
Mr. Shaw?
And good afternoon. Thank you so very much for this opportunity to present myself today. My name is William Shaw Shaw. I'm a native of the city of Sarasota, Florida, born and raised here. My family has lived in this area for over 110 years. I am a graduate of the Booker High School, attended the Booker Schools growing up. I attended Gibbs Junior College before it became St. Petersburg Junior College. I had McGrath, read at the Berean Bible College, attended TCU, Texas Christian during my military, where I spent four years in the United States Air Force. I was a member of the Strategic Air Command, besides being a member of PACAP. I was in Korea when the Puebla was taken with Commander Lord Bill Booker. My family, I am the father of nine, having raised three of my sister's children when she was slain, along with mine, and I consider them all to be my love and my God loves Jesus. I am a retiree of the U.S. Postal Service, having over 30 years there, where I was steward, chief steward, vice president, and president of my labor union, the first African-American to do so, Branch 2148 of the ladder carriers of Sarasota. I am three-time mayor of the city of Sarasota, twice vice mayor, nine years on the commission, and I look forward to serving the city and its constituents as we go forward in this next term of commission. And thank you so very much for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Ms. Alpert? You need to unmute, Ms. Alpert.
I'm usually very good about unmuting, so sorry about that. Yeah, I am the, one of the sitting city commissioners. I've been on the commission since May of 2015 and served as the mayor from May of 2018 to November of 2019. I'm the oldest of eight children. My father was a truck driver and my mother was a homemaker, needless to say, with that many children. When I got out of high school, my parents' finances made it such that I couldn't really go to college, so I started taking classes and, along with raising three daughters, it took me about 20 years to get my undergraduate degree from the University of South Florida. Then at age 54, I went to Stetson University College of Law, and I am now a practicing attorney. While I was in law school, I served on the city of Sarasota's Human Relations Board and then the Civil Service Personnel Board until I was elected in 2015. I moved back, I moved here originally to Sarasota in 1974, lived here till 79, and then went to St. Pete in Tampa and came back here in 2002. So I've been here eight years. When I was in Tampa, I served on the city's Architecture Review Commission, where I learned about historic preservation and smart growth. I served on that board for six years, went to every historic preservation convention I could go to to learn about that, and I think that's valuable knowledge in terms of what we need to do on the city commission. I'm currently serving on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Public Transportation Task Force, the Bay Governing Board, the Economic Development Corporation, and that's and the Florida League of Cities Transportation Committee, and I'm looking forward to this forum tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, good evening and thank you. City government is quite complex, far more so than many people realize. To be an effective commissioner, one should have experience in three core areas: experience managing in large, complex organizations, in-depth financial management experience, and detailed knowledge of complex land use regulations. For nearly 30 years, I worked in large, complex organizations. I was the corporate treasurer of Bank of America in San Francisco, a financial controller for Eastman Kodak in Rochester, New York, and the managing director at Bankers Trust in both New York and London. Also, I was a finance and economics professor at the University of California, Berkeley, and finally, I worked as a consultant on President Ronald Reagan's Commission on Cost-Cutting in Government. Here in Florida, I have focused on the environment. I've served as board chair for the Nature Conservancy of Florida, board treasurer for Thousand Friends of Florida, and I've been an ongoing member of the Sierra Club's Conservation Committee. And finally, I was a member of Sarasota County's Environmental Lands Committee. I have also extensive experience in land use regulations. I served as a member of Sarasota County's Planning Board, and from 2009 to 2013, I served on the Sarasota City Commission. I believe that the breadth and depth of my experience qualifies me uniquely to help lead Sarasota during these difficult times. It's my hope that by the end of the hour, you agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Clermont, if you'll unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thanks to the League of Women Voters. This is the type of venue now that we communicate with using these types of forums. It's very valuable to us these days. And hello to all my fellow candidates, and thank you all for being here. Again, yes, my name is Dan Clermont, candidate in District Three, and moved here with my wife to Sarasota, or I should say, 10 years ago. Had property here for about 14 years now, and love the area here. My background is that I had graduated from high school in Green Bay, Wisconsin. The pack is warm yesterday, so I'm in a good mood today. And I also graduated from UW-Green Bay and have a technical degree as well from Northeast Wisconsin Technical Institute in Architecture. And I've been primarily in business for myself. I've had jobs for others, but primarily for the last 30 years, I've been working for myself. I had a screen printing embroidery company along with a partner back in Green Bay, had about 35 employees, and that makes for a very interesting experience. Also, I had a smaller business, and after that, I had worked in Green Bay, and then my partner moved down here, and that's how we ended up down in Florida. So that's kind of the story there. I had been involved with laboratory air quality and improvements and structures and so forth. So I had done that. I've also got the experience of raising five kids. That's a big deal, too. We have a split family, my wife and I have kind of a hers, mine, and ours kind of experience. And, you know, that really is a great life experience. And when I got here to Florida, the business I undertook was buying properties and using these hands here to fix them up and turn them into rentals. I'm proud of that work. We've improved the neighborhoods that they're in, and we're very good and fair with people that we, that live with us. We've helped them out through these difficult times during COVID, and I'm proud of that. So it's very important, and I think that these experiences, life experiences, are the kind of thing that people in Sarasota have that they can relate to, and I think I can bring to the city, and I understand we have to bring efficiency, vibrancy, and customer service to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arroyo?
So, we just had a primary on August 18th, which also marked the 100-year anniversary of women's right to vote, and nobody even mentioned it on TV. It was all about election. So I wanted to take this moment to congratulate. That's an amazing, amazing thing. My story begins in the Dominican Republic. I was raised there, so I'll take you back. My mom had, got pregnant when she was in high school, so she had to drop out of high school and come to America for a better life. She raised me as a single mother. My father was never in the picture. She held numerous jobs to raise my brother and I right here in Sarasota. I used to bike to school, Riverview High School. I became the first to graduate high school in my family from Riverview. I met my wife in high school, too. Actually, she used to come by during lunchtime and sit at our table because she was dating a friend of mine. She's a history teacher now, and she teaches at Sarasota High School. She's, she was a cheerleader back then. Now she's the coach of the cheerleading team here in Sarasota, and we're expecting a baby girl in probably the next 10 days named Ava, which will be my firstborn child. Now I'm an attorney. I'm a trustee for trusts and private foundations for a living. I also represent small business owners and shops in front of the city commission. I've done this for quite some time, and it's enabled me to meet and have a friendly relationship with all the current commissioners. Yes, I mean, I can tell you that I've been involved with, you know, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, the Sheriff's Advisory Board, Teen Corps for 14 years. I can tell you all that, but what really matters is that I was raised here. I know the struggles of District Three, and I can help better the quality of life for all of us here. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a great transition to our next question. And the order for the next question will be Shaw, Battie, Turner, Alpert, Arroyo, Clermont. And the question with 90 seconds, please, is please describe the unique needs of your district. If elected, what would be your highest priority goal to accomplish for your district? Mr. Shaw?
Thank you so very much. District One, in its heart, we require redevelopment economically. The heart of the Newtown community is economic redevelopment. And throughout District One, we have worked very hard to do roads, infrastructure, to change and bring about those changes. And one of those efforts has been the work of the Myrtle Street renovation, recreation, and bringing it about. We need jobs, jobs trainings. I would work very diligently to bring about this to my community and District One. Many of the people within District One need jobs and skill sets that will bring about a better quality of life. We want to have livable wages, something that I'm very much about working towards as we go forward here. Affordable housing is the most important of importance. People need a place to live. Attainable, affordable housing being the thing to do with the jobs to coincide. With that, I'd say thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Battie, if you will unmute, please? Whoops, you're still muted.
There we are.
There you go.
All right, sorry about that.
You're unmuted, Mr. Battie, if you want to go ahead and proceed.
Okay, I apologize about that. Somehow I got disconnected, it seems like. But the problems that I see plaguing our district and District One are the lack of economic opportunity. And one that's central is the lack of home ownership. When you look at 100% of the pie in the Newtown area, only 30% of it is owned by the actual occupants of that area. That means 70% of it is owned by those that don't live there. So we need to set up programs that I see necessary that allows people to sort of improve their credit ratings and give them opportunities at home mortgages or first-time homeowners situations. It's all about expectations up in the Newtown area. But when I look at the remainder of Sarasota, particularly like downtown and Rosemary District, Gillespie Park, they all have their own issues. And, you know, Gillespie Park with sewage, Rosemary District, they want to park, Bayou Oaks, they just want security, make sure their neighborhoods are safe, as do we all. Park East with zoning problems. So I see it as my duty as a commissioner to address those situations as they are needed and see what I can do to bring these neighborhoods on par with one another as opposed to one being left behind. My motto is no neighborhood left behind in our district.
Thank you. Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner, I'm sorry, you need to unmute, and I should have said something.
Interesting. I don't know how that happened. We're at the beginning part of a very severe recession, and the challenge for the whole city and my district especially is going to be maintaining essential city services during a period of steeply declining revenues. I would mention especially police services, which have to be maintained at a time when the police department is under some pressure and attack wrongly, in my opinion, with sort of the defund police movement, which is just, you know, just completely inappropriate. The problem of homelessness is a big problem throughout the city and in our district. The city, as you may know, adopted Housing First in 2014, which has been a quite successful program, one I support. But the recession is going to create a lot more homeless people, and that's going to create additional pressure on city resources. I would also mention that managing growth, keeping growth consistent with the needs of the environment and the ability to provide public infrastructure. We need to reduce traffic congestion, and we need to reduce pollution in the bay, which, after 25 years of improvement, in the last five years, pollution in the bay has red light. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Alpert?
Thank you. Yeah, in District Two, there are three big issues right now. Number one, of course, is the traffic from the barrier islands coming onto the mainland. Number two is the balance between all of the condo owners and condo buildings downtown and the businesses downtown. And the third is the hotel houses out on Lido and St. Armin. So those are three big issues that people in my district are concerned about. So in terms of the hotel houses, I do have a plan for how I think we might be able to solve that by creating some sort of a historic overlay district, which will help in terms of giving it more regulations out there for what can be built. In terms of the traffic, we're building the Gulfstream Roundabout, which I've been a big supporter of and proponent of at the MPO, and we're also looking at a trolley to go back and forth across the bridge, to re-stripe the bridge, to make that an extra lane. And then for the downtown, we're looking at improving our sound ordinances downtown, and then possibly, once that's improved, then looking at then fines for the sound. So I think there's three big things that I hear about all the time in our district that I think we can resolve. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arroyo, if you will unmute, please?
So, as you can see, the districts themselves all have very unique needs. District Three receives the least amount of funding out of any of the districts that you have heard all the candidates talk about so far. And that's a problem to me because we're paying, we pay, they never, we never get our fair share. District Three gets the least amount of funding, our roads are really not taken care of. In my first 100 days, if elected, I would like to do the following. I'd like to place a conservation easement over Bobby Jones, I want to bring dollars back to District Three because we don't get our fair share. I think we need to address neighborhood safety. We need to address traffic patterns. See, it just makes sense for me that you would, that we need a traffic pattern for when we're in season and when we're not in season, but we don't have that. We just have one throughout the entire year. We need code enforcement to prevent slum lords. We need to, we need more police patrolling. It also makes sense that we need to address affordable housing. And why is that? Because no home in District Three is worth $10 million. District Two, yes. Now, you're averaging a $10 million home with someone in my district who makes $25,000 a year, and you're taking the average of that, the median household income, and saying that that's affordable, and it's not. We really need to look at how we address these things and how we calculate it. So that and common sense solutions to homelessness, and that's what I'd like to do.
Thank you. And Mr. Clermont? You'll need to unmute, Mr. Clermont. Whoops. Sorry, still muted.
We're competing with each other with our clicks. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you know, I consider sometimes that District Three is the drive-by district. You know, it's the district that gets forgotten a bit because we're not along the waterfront. There's no waterfront in District Three. People from outside of the town head downtown to eat and to be entertained. The people downtown head out to malls or places beyond. District Three gets forgotten a bit. It's basically a working-class area. And, you know, as I've walked around campaigning, there are a lot of trip hazards on our sidewalks. There's a lot of low spots in the roads that gather water, unpainted stop lines, you know, things like this, that I would like to see us bring up to par with the rest of the city. I think that's important. I think what's also important is planning in our area in District Three. We have a number of arterial roads that I think you're seeing these growth issues where we have these fissures and we have these areas that need to be redeveloped possibly. And we need to have planning that involves the neighborhoods, involves the citizens, because I think that when you have redevelopment, sometimes it seems a negative. I see it as possibly a positive. I know near me, Midtown Plaza, we lost our Winn-Dixie. I would like to see a grocery store back there so it's walkable for people in that area, and that's true along 12th Street, 17th Street, and areas all over District Three. I think it's important that we take a look, do some planning, involve, like I say, the neighborhoods, CCNA, sit down, and let's roll our sleeves up and address these needs that we have to make lives better in District Three.
Thank you. The order for the next question will be Alpert, Turner, Clermont, Arroyo, Battie, and Shaw. And the next question is, what action would you take to improve transportation in Sarasota, and what is your position on the Sarasota In Motion Citywide Master Plan? Ms. Alpert?
Well, actually, I am a huge proponent of the Sarasota In Motion Master Plan. We have some excellent planners who have been working on this. One of our transportation planner actually came from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, so she's got a great background in planning. I think we're looking at multimodal transportation. That doesn't mean that you can't drive your car. What it means is we give people other options for getting around the city. When you do drive your car, you're not going to have as much traffic that you have to deal with. So I think it's a great idea, the trolley I was talking about of re-striping the Ringling Bridge is part of that plan, making for more walkable streets, more opportunities for bicycles. All of those things are in the Sarasota In Motion Plan, and it came about as a result of a lot of public input for what they were looking for, and so I think I would like to see it move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, the Sarasota In Motion Plan is based on the really unrealistic assumption that we can, that government can and should force people out of their cars. It's also based on the unrealistic assumption that our traffic problems will be solved by self-driving cars sometime in the future. I think that's the reason that the commission had the good sense not to implement that plan, but rather just to execute, because it is an unrealistic plan, and it allocates the vast majority of available resources for capital improvements over the coming years to bicycle facilities, walking facilities, and such alike, and very, very little is allocated to improving the automobility. And very, very little is allocated to improving the automobile. The roundabouts can be a big help with traffic congestion in the city in many locations, particularly on the north part of 41 and in downtown Sarasota. So I think that the other piece that we have to do is that we have to manage growth so that the private sector growth and development that we have is consistent with the infrastructure that we have. Right now, growth has gotten way out ahead of our ability to provide infrastructure and we need to bring them into balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clermont.
Thank you. Yeah, when it comes to Sarasota in Motion, I have kind of some mixed thoughts on it, but I think that there are elements that can work. You know, one of the elements, we've got these roundabouts that are under construction now, let's kind of see how that goes and how that works. I think it could work smoothly, I'm optimistic. As I've driven through that area, I think it can work. You know, I come from Green Bay, we probably had about 80 of those roundabouts up there and they did work after much complaining as they were being built. It is a little bit of a challenge though, there's a lot of traffic in that area. Other elements, now, when we're talking about bike lanes and we're talking about walking lanes and we're talking about tree-covered areas, I think we all like those ideas. Committing to it right now, when we're in a kind of economic situation that we are, is probably wise that we did not jump in, maybe we can piecemeal some of these things as we go, but you know, we've got to take it a step at a time. I do like the idea of using a trolley system, I've thought about that for a long time, moving people around. When I've traveled, you know, you take those trolleys and it does get you off the street and give you a chance to cut down on traffic and I think that's good. This traffic that we do have, much of it comes from the county, that growth we don't control. And it's been sprawling out there, we have 700,000 people living in the area and who knows how many are coming here during season, it's hard to control all of that. And it is a challenge and I think we have to try to create safety with better walking and the bike lanes and so on over time.
Thank you. Mr. Arroyo.
So here's a fact for you. Most of the traffic that is on Tamiami, our busiest road in the city, is not headed to Sarasota or from Sarasota. What we need to do is we need to prioritize local traffic and provide avenues for the neighborhoods to kind of maneuver the way around this traffic that's going through Sarasota. And there are many things we can do. First, we can synchronize our lights, our traffic lights. People have been saying that for, I don't know how many, I think since 2012 in Liz Alpert's campaign, they were saying that. And nothing's been done, I don't know why. We can, like I said, we could, aside from synchronizing, we can have a different algorithm for season and not in season, we need to prioritize road improvements, especially in District Three, gets a little bit, gets some dollars that way. I don't agree with the staff's proposal, the, I don't agree with the Sarasota in Motion, it's counterintuitive in a lot of ways. And it's just another report that the city's, that the city's going to put on the shelf and not do anything about. Right now, we need to hunker down and address the concerns of the community as it relates to COVID. And that should be our priority, not this master plan that seems sort of far-fetched in terms of its applicability, doesn't seem, it does not seem reasonable, not now, but not at a later date either, actually. We should, we should reevaluate the whole thing. Thank you.
And Mr. Batty, if you will unmute, please.
How you doing? You know what, I like certain aspects of Sarasota in Motion. I'm glad to see that the city has accepted it, but not yet adopted it. Gives it an opportunity to review it and work out some kinks and tweak it where it needs to be tweaked. Having lived in a place like New York City, as congested as it is, it is relatively pedestrian and bike-friendly. You know, I could bike from the Upper West Side of Manhattan where I live to Brooklyn, where my girlfriend lives, and back with no problem, walking, walking around the streets of New York, you know, no problem. I would like to see this, the neighborhoods of this city, particularly in District One, merge themselves where it's easy to go from Gillespie Park to Rosemary District with no, with no issue. And I agree with Mr. Arroyo in terms of the traffic lights being synchronized to move traffic along. You know, initially I had some issue with roundabouts because I lived in Indianapolis for a little bit and in the Midwest they had quite a few roundabouts. And, you know, I wasn't like a big fan of them, but being here in Sarasota and seeing how they've been working, I think it moves the traffic along. But the, with the proposal of the downtown diet and way of narrowing streets, be it like 12th or 17th, I think it's essential that we synchronize the lights and move the traffic along in order for something like that to work. You know, so as I said, I'm in agreement with the acceptance, but not yet adopted, of Sarasota in Motion.
I did it to myself there. Thank you. And Mr. Shaw, if you will unmute, please.
Thank you. First, I think staff did an outstanding job in bringing the project to the commission. I applaud and thank my fellow commissioners for accepting the project. It has worked and it has time, and that's all with growth and time, so that has not been a problem for me. Our roundabouts, I'm very, very much appreciative of the roundabouts. Coming from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Gulfstream Roundabout being an FDOT project is one that will include our barrier islands and the work that has to be done there. This is going to be a growing project and that's why it is in motion and will grow as time goes about. So we have it and it's not sitting on a shelf, it will not sit on a shelf. We are here to make it work and it works only if you work it. I have found it to be very, very much our responsibility to widen, narrow, and create what we need. One of the things that I wanted most in this transportation project was the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. The order for the next question will be Turner, Alpert, Arroyo, Clermont, Shaw, and Batty. And the question is, what is your position on the administrative review program for code and zoning vis-à-vis the public review process? Mr. Turner?
Yes, I think that administrative review has been responsible for a number of very bad development projects downtown. I think this is the public city, it is the voter's city. And on big monumental projects, 10, 18-story buildings, the public has the right to be heard and should be heard. The counterargument has always been that administrative site plan approval stimulates development. I think that's probably not true. I think what stimulates development in Sarasota is over a 20-year period, 46% growth in National GMP, a five-and-a-half-million-person increase in the population of Florida, and a CRA for downtown in which the county and the city pumped millions and millions of dollars into public infrastructure improvement. I believe that if we eliminate administrative site plan review downtown, we can continue to have good development as is appropriate, given the economy, and that the public input will lead to better development. And so I very much favor restricting administrative site plan review. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alpert.
Yes, I think the administrative review in the downtown has worked very well. This plan that is coming out of the ground now in the downtown was created in 2002, 2003 with a lot of public input for what the downtown should look like. And then it didn't happen for several years due to the last recession. And after the recession was over, it started coming out of the ground. And there are some portions of it, I think, that need to be tweaked and we're looking at that, so more setbacks, wider sidewalks, things like that. And what people have to remember is, if you build in the downtown, if you want to vary from what the actual zoning code is, then there is public input into it. So you can only build exactly what the plan is and I think that provides certainty for the public as well as the people who want to do projects in the downtown. So I'm not opposed to having administrative review. I think if there are issues, then it's the underlying zoning then that we should change and that's what we're looking at doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arroyo.
So there have to be parameters that trigger administrative review and parameters that would trigger a public hearing. What we really need is an entirely new code. I was in favor of the Form-based code that we spent $3 million and $1.4 million in three years trying to come up with and we still have it on the shelf, it's another report that's on the shelf. And I think we need to bring it back, we need a whole new system and we need to take into account our current problems. We need to develop a code that encourages public input, transparency, accountability, and clear expectations. We need a predictable code. We need for there to be a checks and balances because the current process allows the interpretation of the code, I'm dealing with this right now, in the hands of just a few individuals, maybe two or three. And which resulted is it's selective enforcement, it's selective interpretation, you can, you can interpret the code in whatever way fits your narrative. And, and we need something that is concrete, that does not open us up for, to legal liability like it has in the past, and that, and that creates clear expectations for everyone at the beginning and nobody's surprised at the end. So we need to determine what impact projects will have and make sure that we develop a new code to reflect those needs.
Thank you. Mr. Clermont, if you will unmute, please.
Yeah, I'm in favor of continuing with administrative review, but you know, there are problems. There are, you know, I drive through downtown and I see side setback issues and I see narrow sidewalks in the front of the view. And there are, I don't know that public review is the answer to that, those can be Band-Aid issues, issue by issue or building by building and project by project. What we need to do, and you're hearing this yet again, is we need to revisit our code, we need to revisit the way things are zoned and coded in the city. And we need to involve the people who are impacted, the people who live near these areas, the businesses there, we have to involve Neighborhood Association, CCNA, get full buy-in on the changes that need to be made that are making people upset. And then as we move forward, we can say, okay, now this is what we have all agreed on, we have buy-in from everybody. And now the people that are living there, the commissioners, people on city staff and developers, understand what a project with parameters are. I think that developers are happy to work with reasonable parameters. But what's happening right now is people are not happy with what they're seeing. It sounded good in 2003 when Duane talked about it, but now they're seeing it, some aren't happy. Let's not break each project down, let's change down, or change the underlying code and make it a place people want to see in the years to come.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. I think that the administrative review process worked well as it began, but I found that our CRA worked even better when we got the voices of the people moving about, bringing about those changes. A compromise or a combination of the two possibilities, there's always room for improvement and it can be done. I wouldn't expand it, the administrative review to other areas until we see what it does, where it's at, and it hasn't proven itself to be what we had thought it would be in the beginning. And I would, again, be against expanding it. And was there other portions to this question that you wanted me to answer?
It was your position on the process primarily.
On the process itself, it has been tried, it has proven itself not to be everything that we had expected, but I wouldn't toss it out with the dishwasher.
All right. And Mr. Batty, if you would unmute, please.
Thank you for the question. You know, I'm in support of administrative review and I support public input when it comes to zoning changes. Trust me, there are a lot of changes that need to be made to allow for deeper setbacks that would allow for wider sidewalks, allow for canopy trees, and I'm a big fan of canopy trees, I love the shade. But as for site plans, that would meet the zoning code, I think that should be left up to the building professionals, you know, in that arm of the process. We should aim to streamline the process, particularly in like blighted areas of our, you know, sort of downtrodden corridors of the city, you know, that would encourage investment and we don't want to discourage them through public hearings. So, you know, I would say we look at the Obama Affordable Housing Toolkit of 2016, which I sort of gave a glance at, and it talks about streamlining the process of administrative review. And I think that would serve the city well. Thank you.
Thank you. The order for the next question is Clermont, Arroyo, Batty, Shaw, Alpert, Turner. And the question is, if elected, what steps, if any, would you take to reform our police department, its policies, and race relations within our community?
Thank you.
Mr. Clermont.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this is obviously a hot-button issue right now and a very difficult one. I think in general, we have a good police department here, but that doesn't mean there can't be more outreach, that our chief and staff and even patrol officers can't spend more time in areas that are affected, such as the minority areas, which we've had some problems between the relationships there, here, and across the country. Though, I must say, I think we've got a decent police department here. You can always have additional training, it comes down to training and it comes down to outreach. Really, to me, when children are young, you set that opinion of what people are. And if the police are spending time in the schools and in community outreach, I think you set a tone and you set a relationship between the police, between the community. Because I know that even in communities that are adversely affected sometimes by police action, they do want good police action and good police coverage as well. If there's, just like on my street, if something goes wrong, I want the police to be there and so does everyone in the city. These things that have happened have been terribly unfortunate and I sure would like to see us to be able to have a better way to remove bad cops from the police department that may be beyond the city government's reach to make those changes. But, you know, I support the police, but I do understand the stresses that there have been.
Thank you. And Mr. Arroyo.
Hey, I was on Facebook recently and I was looking at the Sarasota City Police's, their page, and they were showing, you know, just a couple of police officers on a Friday afternoon playing basketball with some, they couldn't, they had to be like, I don't know, middle school or maybe high school. They were just, they were working, but they were also in the area that they were in, developing a relationship with the people. And that was, that was in North Sarasota and I thought that was really, really cool. I think what we need to do is, we need to focus on training, we need to focus on hiring, on creating diversity in the police department. I think we need strong leadership that holds their people accountable, the ones that are hired. And I think we need to provide the police with the best equipment possible. But one thing we cannot do is defund the police, as it's been, has been, you know, advocated for out there. I think we need the police department, we need protection, we need the rule of law. Otherwise, it's rampant, it's like if you didn't have code enforcement, you know, it's just, it would just run rampant without a control. I've done ride-alongs with the police department and it is unbelievable what they go through. Every single day, they march head-on into, into danger and we need, we need them in our community. And we need, we need them in our community. Trust me, I did one ride-along one evening and I had numerous scary, scary, you know, scenarios in there. And they do that every single day and I admire that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Batty, if you will unmute, please.
Excellent. Thank you for that question. First of all, I have a great deal of respect for the police, no matter where they are in this country, particularly here in Sarasota. You know, I've had the opportunity to talk to many. They're very respectful and they take their jobs quite seriously. I think that it's very unacceptable that we have certain safety issues in certain quadrants of our city or a certain quadrant up in Newtown, where we can't have the amount of shootings and so on that have plagued us during this pandemic. That needs to be addressed. That halts any type of development, any type of investment. And you know, just it's not good for the quality of life for the residents of that area. That being said, you know, having the endorsement of all three police unions of the city, I see it as important to bring both the community and the police department together to have an ongoing dialogue that is, you know, that has a comma instead of a period. You know, something that we can agree on amicably and have a mutual respect for one another. So if elected, you know, city commissioner, I would see it as my duty to make sure that the community and the police come together. And I'm in favor of police, you know, community policing, to have the community and the police have a great relationship so that the children can respect the police so that they may one day want to be police officers, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Batty. Mr. Shaw.
And thank you. Having worked very, very diligently throughout my tenure on the city commission. We came about with local law enforcement bringing about the DMI, drug market intervention, bringing about alternatives to prison for individuals in the streets. The drug market intervention has worked well. We have created within the city of Sarasota, our independent police advisory panel and the police committee, both having done great work to bring about change within the community and the law enforcement agencies. Here, I think just this past week, local law enforcement proved itself in the negotiations of a hostage incident event that took place where we worked within the community itself in North Sarasota and law enforcement. It works well. It works again when you work it. We are able to bring about change. And I'm hoping to see a greater number of individuals from within the community becoming members of SPD as we go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Ms. Alpert.
Thank you. It's a really, excuse me, really tough time to be a police officer right now. I think in many cases, you know, they're being villainized and it's not all of the police officers who are guilty of these things that we see on social media, which are horrendous. But I can say in the city of Sarasota, I think our police officers have been exemplary in their behavior. Chief DePino implemented a community policing program when she came and crime is down in our city 35% since her tenure. She recently created two community action teams. And the difference between those teams and the regular community policing is they don't have to respond to calls from, you know, when something goes off on the radio and says, you know, we've got to go to this crime scene or this crime scene. They don't have to do that. They're going to be able to work in the community and find out what the root causes are of the violence. We're instituting a program with first step to look at in some situations to send a social worker with them and, you know, for mental health situations and things like that. We also are, we also have created or adopted the "8 is Enough" program so that we reduce the use of force in our police department. So I'm done, all right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Turner, if you will unmute, please.
Thank you. When I was on the commission, we started a program to develop an organic police department that was constantly changing as the situation on the ground changed and its conditions on the ground changed. We established a police advisory board and the citizens complaint board, all of which were designed to provide information to the city commission, the city manager, and the police on how we might, on an ongoing basis, improve policing on the ground. The policing, one of those is community policing. And I believe that we have done an outstanding job. I think that the national environment with respect to policing is toxic and people are asking these questions because of that national environment. I think we have a fine police department here and I think that we need to guard against the calls to reimagine the police or defund the police. I think what's important for us is for us to continually support the police and to facilitate their organic adjustment to the changes on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. The order for the next question, Aurora, Arroyo, I apologize, Clermont, Shaw, Batty, Turner, Alpert. And the question is, "If elected, how would you foster sustainable economic activity and clean energy jobs in Sarasota?" Mr. Arroyo, you'll need to unmute. There you go.
Oh, so what we need to focus on in Sarasota is really getting our fiscal house in order, especially going into this COVID situation that's going to greatly reduce our revenue, our tourism, our business taxes, our real estate taxes. Once this, you know, moratorium on evictions and foreclosures is lifted, it's going to be bad. We need to prepare for that. We need, first, we need a hiring moratorium at the city level. I think we need to save dollars wherever we can at the city level. That is, I would get rid of the sustainability department and the economic development department. And that would save just over a half a million dollars a year. Legal fees, I would, I think we should reduce them by 20%. We're spending a lot. I mean, $5 million in some cases a year in legal fees. I think we should spend, we should do a 6% cut across all department budgets except for the police. I think that that is how we make up some of the losses that we'll have so we don't have to dip into reserves. I mean, we have a lot of projects that we're continuing to work on that we just don't have money for. We haven't halted the projects. We're moving forward with a $22 million project on Bobby Jones with money we don't have. And we know it's not going to be done in two years. We know it's not, it just doesn't make sense, not in this climate. So we need to stop some projects. We need to cut some expenses and we need to move forward that way.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, I appreciate that you were addressing the economy, but I did want to have us focus on cleaner energy jobs for this question to reiterate that for the group.
We just put it in the new code.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clermont. Mr. Clermont, I'm sorry, you need to unmute.
Well, I was ready to do it and then you started talking again. You threw me off. All right, okay, sorry. Like how I blamed you for that. Yeah, clean energy jobs are a way of the future, I think. You know, across the entire country, anything that, any kind of green industry and so on, if we can be leaders in that area is terrific. Now, how to make that happen is a more difficult question moving forward. It's hard how we're going to create green jobs. I mean, we do have a sustainability department and their job is to try to make sure that the city is moving toward the Ready For 100 program, which I think is bright, that we do that type of thing, make that commitment, move forward and have, I suppose the positions will come from the fact that we're going to more of a green style of running our city. And I think we have to, Eric had said, my opponent had said, "Put it in the code." Yes, let's make the rules for that and let's just follow them. It's important that we do that. The environment is so important to us here, whether it's water quality, air quality, or whatnot. And I think we have to be leaders on the Gulf Coast. We're a fairly affluent city and we should be leaders in this area. And I believe in it very much.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. Moving forward here with green jobs and cleaner air and environment here in Sarasota. Again, one of those things that I had asked for some time ago was to be our chief bus rapid transit, where we would have been able to park our vehicles in South County, take a rapid transit and then get out of the number of vehicles that we have on the roads along just polluting the air. We have done great work here in our bay and cleaning that up. But how do we sustain jobs that we're going to go forward here? Many years ago, green fuels, we had LP gas and petrol driving our vehicles that bought about cleaner fuel burning. And we're also and have also put in place electric charging stations for many of the vehicles that we are seeing coming about. These are the things that we're going to go about to bring about change on both transportation and jobs themselves in a cleaner environment going forward.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Batty, if you will unmute, please. You're still muted. Linda, can you unmute? There we go. Whoop, you both did it simultaneously, I think.
Thank you, it's great.
Linda, can you help?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, I apologize. I said first, I think we need to concentrate on building green jobs and the training and the opportunity that goes with them. Think as, you know, in speaking about the Sarasota Emotion Project, I think, you know, that's a good start. You know, the cut down on the emissions, you know, in traffic, getting people to walk more and bicycle more around the city. I'm a huge proponent of the environment, huge proponent of the environment. When I was in school, my instructor always said that there's a war going on between grass, trees, and concrete. And grass and trees are taking a beating. So that being said, you know, I'm for, you know, whatever green space that we can either develop and/or keep, you know, as best we can. So like I said, but we need to start with building green jobs in this city, District One in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Turner.
Yeah, the, you know, the jobs that we can have here in Sarasota are a function of the national economic trends, the business cycle. And they're also a function of the resources that we have here in Sarasota. Our resources are principally cultural institutions and environment, and a clean environment. The jobs we have coming out of that are principally tourism and principally real estate development. Those are sustainable activities, but they are cyclic. The notion that we will have a big cadre of green jobs here in Sarasota, I believe, is unrealistic. There will be green jobs throughout the country, but we're not in a good position to compete for those jobs. The county's economic development department has been trying for 20 years to develop high-wage green jobs. And they haven't moved the needle a bit in 20 years. So I think that we need to focus in terms of our contribution to the environment on what our citizens consume and what the city consumes. So for example, regulation that limits stormwater, keeps our bays clean. Green space, providing green space and a canopy tree cover, stormwater management, and then reducing the city's consumption of fossil fuel energy sources.
Thank you. Yes, okay. Ms. Alpert, if you'll unmute. There you go.
Yeah, thank you so much. I actually think that we have a great sustainability department and I think they've contributed a lot to some of the sustainability projects that we're doing in the city and to prepare us for sea level rise. One of the things that we adopted in the city is the Ready For 100 program where the city facilities would be all on renewable energy by 2030 and the rest of the city by 2045. The city itself is almost there. We're at about 85% renewable energy for city facilities. And I think by helping other businesses and entities adopt some of these renewable energy projects or adapt their buildings to that, I think will create some green jobs. I also think the conservation easement, if we can get that over Bobby Jones and create the 100-acre stormwater project that we're working on with the county, those will create green jobs and cut down on the environmental pollution. So I think we've got a lot going on. I agree with Mr. Turner that we can't create them here, but we can create things that we can control and get on renewable energy as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have a lot of wonderful questions left, but we're out of time. And I had originally said that we'd have two minutes each for the conclusion, but if you can possibly cut it back a little bit, we are over time. If you can try to condense into one minute, that would be great. We'll go with Mr. Batty, Mr. Shaw, Alpert, Turner, Clermont, Arroyo. And again, if you can just summarize why voters should elect you to Sarasota City Commission. And we'll start with Ms. Batty.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure, you know, if I was unmuted or not. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you all for giving us this opportunity and thank fellow candidates as well and all those that are participating. But what we need in District One and throughout the city is a new choice, a fresh voice and just a choice overall, you know. And District One's been given a leadership without the opportunity of choice. And choice is pretty much what makes this country tick. If I'm elected city commissioner of District One, I would make my priorities to revitalize our neighborhoods, to increase economic opportunities, ease the cost of living, reduce homelessness, and support our arts and culture, which is part all, part of the fabric of the city and what we can do to work together to make our city more vibrant and push into the future. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. And Mr. Shaw.
To continue to work with the region, to continue to work with the state and the nation to bring Sarasota to the forefront, making it the 18th most populous city in the nation. It is my effort and endeavor to do that through the number of jobs that I've held as Minnesota League of Cities, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the Southwest Regional Planning Council, all necessary to bring about change to our city. Bringing the $30 million for our sand and Lido Beach renourishment to the million for our sand and Lido Beach renourishment to this city. It is largely necessary to continue going forward and not come with something that is new or somebody else's voice speaking on my behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alpert?
Thank you. Well, when I ran five years ago, I wanted to bring the Bayfront 2020 vision to completion, help resolve our homeless problem, and implement smart growth in our community. The Bay project is well on its way. The homeless count has been reduced by about 60%, and smart growth is occurring in our community. I'm running a second time because I want to continue that planning for smart growth, planning for a smart multimodal transportation system, planning for sea level rise and sustainability, planning the creation of a world-class park system, planning how we retain our historic and cultural assets such as the Sarasota Orchestra and Selby Gardens. I've been working on these issues for the past five years. We've made significant progress, but there's still more to do. So, I'm asking for your votes so that I can continue my work for you. Please go to votelizalpert.com and join my campaign for a better, smarter Sarasota. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Turner?
Since 2015, the city's annual budget has increased $60 million, or 6% a year. An annual growth rate of 6% is both excessive and unsustainable. Now, we're facing a severe recession, and city staff is trying to avoid making painful but necessary cuts. Instead, they're promoting minor short-term budget adjustments and reductions in cash reserves to maintain spending levels. Unfortunately, Commissioner Alpert is following staff rather than leading. I'm running to help lead the city through a severe recession to protect essential city services and to protect the city's long-term financial health. I have the experience and the motivation to protect our city. I'm also running to represent voters, not decide what is good for them, because I believe in representative democracy. I'm Terry Turner, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Clermont?
Thank you. I think that if you want to be a leader anywhere, you have to have a vision for something, and I believe I do. I have a vision for efficiency, for vibrancy, for customer service from our city. I'd like to see efficiency in the way we handle our student budget, the way we deal with our wastewater management and stormwater runoff so we can protect our environment. It's so important to us here. When it comes to customer service, so many times, I hear from people, whether they're in business here, or whether they are just everyday people dealing with the city, that the customer service seems to fall down. It's a, whether you're dealing with the building department trying to get a permit, or you're just trying to get the city to come out to trim trees somewhere, or they're trying to get their street improved, sidewalks improved, or the parks improved. And when it comes to vibrancy, I think it's a responsibility of the city to support the most, some of the most important industries in our city. We've got tourism and the arts and culture, and I think we help them during difficult times and help them plan for when they have eventual growth, working around affected neighbors and neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Arroyo?
Well, I remember biking these roads when I was in high school, and I will represent those that have been forgotten in our district because I'm one of, I'm one of you. I imagine a Sarasota where the next generation can enjoy clean, clear water at the beaches without worrying about sewage spills or red tide, where there's no ambiguity to the code, where there is no double standard for Hispanics seeking a permit from the city, as was publicly said recently by a former employee at the Herald Tribune, on the Herald Tribune article, where we don't harass ice cream trucks, where District Three gets the same beautification projects at downtown gates, where we don't increase our utility rates 47% over the next 11 years without, just a blank, you know, without asking anyone or finding another way, where I can take my wife and daughter to the park and not worry about our safety, where I can bike up and down the Legacy Trail and meet the neighbors from surrounding neighborhoods, where traffic flows smoothly and adapts more efficiently to change. The future is bright. The time to act is now. I'm Erica Arroyo, and remember to vote for E in District Three.
Candidates, thank you for participating. Thanks also to our volunteers Carol Hartz, Pat Price, Linda Thompson, Rob Burgess, and Nancy Morrison. Viewers, if we were unable to get to your question, please follow up with the candidates directly using the information provided in our online voter guide, vot411.org. Finally, remember that your vote is your voice. The Sarasota Leagues thanks you for being with us. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.